Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. It is Monday, October 2nd, 2017. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Scott? Drew? Nordstrom? Modrick? Solomon? Lewis? Armstrong? Laurenti? Drury? Roberts? We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll have the invocation by Scott Ingman of Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. God of glory, God of mercy, God of peace. We come to you this evening with hearts full of gratitude for all the wonderful things you do to sustain and empower us to live full lives here in Rapid City. Our appreciation is not limited to what you've done for each of us individually, but also for what you are doing for us as your collective people across this community. We appreciate our strong economy. We appreciate the active and engaged faith community, all the vigorous sports and extracurricular activities we get to be a part of, and for the wonderful schools, caring professionals who help invest so much into the next generation. I thank you for the servants in this room tonight, and the City Council, and our mayor, who give their best to the management of our municipality and who plan carefully for a healthy and prosperous future. I also thank you for all of our public servants who help ensure our health and safety even as we meet right now. And Lord, on this momentous day, we cannot help but remember those lost in the tragedy in Las Vegas last night. Our hearts and prayers go out to those who witnessed this terrible occurrence and those who lost loved ones. We know you have great things in store for those who love you and who are called according to your purpose, and we claim this for the families affected in Las Vegas, and also for those of us here tonight. We ask for your blessing and the deliberations of this night for wisdom, guidance, and inspiration to lead boldly, and it's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Now, we'll have the adoption of the agenda. This is the time when the council can adopt the agenda as is or make alterations to it. Motion to approve the agenda by Lewis and a second by Solomon. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. And now onto awards and recognitions. We just have one today. Whereas on a global scale, roughly one in four people live in conditions that harm their health, safety, prosperity, and opportunities. And whereas on a local level, 955 people were homeless in South Dakota in 2017, and whereas secure tenure not only facilitates opportunities for investment and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of identity, status, and political power, and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly has declared the first Monday in October as World Habitat Day, a time to unite in a worldwide effort to eradicate poverty housing. By raising awareness and advocating for universal decent housing, we can change the systems that reinforce poverty housing and make affordable homes a reality for all. And whereas in recognition of World Habitat Day 2017, Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity will continue to build and preserve simple, decent, affordable housing for families in the Black Hills, and will continue to address the lack of decent housing around the world while reducing the environmental impact by recycling building materials through Habitat Restores. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2017, as World Habitat Day in Rapid City, and encourage all citizens to work toward the elimination of inadequate housing. And I'll present this to Scott Ingman of Black Hills Area Habitat. Would you like to say a few words, Scott?
I would. Thank you very much. To succeed in eliminating poverty housing around the world in our lifetime, we must promote smart policies and advance access to adequate, affordable housing. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, families who pay more than 30 percent of their income for housing are considered most cost-burdened and have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care. An estimated 12 million renter and homeowner households now pay more than 50 percent of their annual incomes for housing. Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity's vision is a world where everyone has a decent place to live. Through partnerships like this one, we can become leaders in creating sustainable and transformational development. We aim to serve 60 additional local families in the community over the next five years and look forward to this important imperative relationship with the City of Rapid City. Thank you, Mayor Allender, and the City of Rapid City for your continued support.
Item number two, to confirm the appointment of Ken Young as Community Planning and Development Services Director and authorize a mayor and finance officer to sign employment contract. So ladies and gentlemen of the council, I would ask you to confirm the appointment of Ken Young as our new planning director. Have we got a motion in a second or two? Thank you for that. Mr. Young is the, his presence here is the product of about a year and a half-long search for planning, Community Planning Director. Mr. Young is a former Community Development Director in Pleasant Grove City, Utah, has been a city planning consultant for Utah Community Planners and an engineering firm, has been a planning commissioner, has experience as a long-range planner, has also experience as an assistant city manager and community development director in Nevada. He's been a project manager, a site manager, and a legislative intern. He possesses a master's, a public administration degree, a bachelor's degree in political science and language, and an associate's degree in business. It's my belief that this was the right choice, a result of the right process for the search for this important position, and I ask for your support. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now, Ken, if you'll come down, we'll have the swearing in.
So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I, Ken Young.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Of the State of South Dakota.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of Community Planning and Development Services Director.
Of Community Planning and Development Services Director.
Within the Office of Community Planning and Development Services.
Within the Office of Community Planning and Development Services.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my.
And to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we're on to general public comment, which is time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on these issues, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We have a couple of speaker requests for general public comment. One is for Dave Metz from Disabled American Veterans. Would you like to approach the podium? You have a few minutes.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you all for being here. Thank you guests for being here. I come before you tonight to say, we're done. We got our vision project completed, and I'm gonna pass out some invites to you all in a quick pictorial for those of you that can't make it. We'll be having a ceremony, a small ceremony, Saturday at the Disabled American Veterans Hall. Before I pass these out, one proud thing that I want to let you all know, originally I had projected $30,000 before I ever started talking to anybody on the hard-cold numbers. By the time I came before the board, I only needed $21,000. All said and done, we actually only spent just over $18,000. So, and that's through the big hearts of the community, the vendors, you all, and I'd like to thank my ward four, councilmen and councilwoman. Dale Tech, for your prior job helped me figure out where I was gonna put this thing at. Thank you. And of course, Joel Landin, for helping me get through this process. I learned a lot of things. Thank you. I'll pass these out and leave you all be. Thank you very much.
That is the sturdiest-looking flagpole I have ever seen in my life. Shimbino?
My name is Alex Shimbino, and I am a current junior at the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. And I'm here representing Lambda Chi Alpha Pi Mu Chapter at the South Dakota School of Mines and let you know about an event that's going to be coming up on October 27th. It is called Night in the Cold. It's actually quite fitting that we came here tonight for the World Habitat Day, because this is to raise awareness for the homeless people here in Rapid City. It's kind of targeted towards families to come out and learn more about it. Some of the events that are going to be going on is, we're gonna start off the day with like a dinner, we're gonna be having speakers and carnival games, and also a movie for all of the children to see. And then, at the end of the night, everyone will be like sleeping outside in the South Dakota School of Mines quad, pending the weather, of course. If the weather's too cold or too nasty, we'll be moving it inside. Right now, the current, the price, pricing of the event is $15, and the first 100 people to sign up will be getting a T-shirt with the Night in the Cold logo. And all the proceeds that we get will be going to the Cornerstone Mission here in Rapid City. And all I ask of you guys is just to let your family, your friends know about it all, and so we can have a really great turnout for this and help raise awareness for homeless people here in Rapid City. Thank you. It's October 27th, so it is a Friday night. Starts at 5:00 PM in the Serbeck Center.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us through general public comment, now on to non-public hearing items, items four through 32. There are no speaker requests on the public comment items, which are four through 25. So we'll go on to consent, items four through 25. Would the council like to remove any of these items, or would you like to accept them as a group? Motion to approve by Lewis, second by Solomon. All in favor of approving the consent items, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number 26. Under ordinances, second reading, ordinance 6200, and ordinance amending chapter 8.28 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to grass, weeds, and noxious matter. Committee recommendation is to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Solomon, second by Laurenti. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number 27, first reading, ordinance 6199, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by DTH LLC for a rezoning from agricultural district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located east of Dias Avenue. Committee recommendation is to approve. Motion to approve by Nordstrom, second by Modrick. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now for Community Planning and Development Services items, item number 28, we'll go to Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 28, number 17PL040, a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc., for Katrin Boulevard Investors, LLC, for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots A through D, lots 1 through 20 of block 2, lots 1 through 15 of blocks 3, lots 1 through 20 of block 4, lots 1 through 20 of block 5, lots 1 through 37 of block 6, lots 1 through 9 of block 7, lots 1 through 5 of block 8, and lots 1 and 2 of block 9, of South Terrace subdivision generally described as being located southeast of Katrin Boulevard, east of Mount Rushmore Road, and I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second by John Roberts. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now on to Public Works Committee items, starting with item 29, we'll go back to Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 29, PW082917-13, appeal of denied exception request from Chrisborough Hospitality, LLC, to waive the requirement to provide a traffic impact study per city, for, per city IDCM, section 2.17, traffic studies for a proposed True Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel, located on track A Rushmore Center subdivision. This is continued from the August 29th, 2017, and September 12th, 2017 Public Works Committee meeting, and this was sent to council without recommendation.
Okay, is there anyone from Chrisborough Hospitality here? No? Okay, this is an unusual circumstance. Let's go to, Dale Tech, can we get a explanation of what's going on here, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'd had some discussions with the applicant. This is in regards to development of a motel and a standalone restaurant on Eglin Street, east of La Crosse Street and west of Rushmore Crossing, if you will. So, there's a furniture store, Luna Avenue, right there at the intersection. This is located just west of that. The applicant did not want to perform a traffic study to try to identify what type of turning movements would be required based on their expected traffic in and out of the development to see if any improvements would be necessary on Eglin Street. City staff, the administration negotiated with the folks and came up with a solution to provide them with some information that would be helpful to them as far as what we believe would be the improvements necessary to construct. That information was provided to them late last week. I believe their engineer was working up some numbers, looking at the geometrics of it. We haven't heard back, so I'm not sure what the action, the appropriate action tonight would be for the item. Certainly, the traffic study, I don't believe is, is necessary. I think city staff, city traffic engineers looked at it and have come up with a, a good solution for them where they didn't need to do the traffic study, but I'm not sure what their desire is on this. They were very specific at committee that they wanted this sent to council without recommendation. But my estimation, my original recommendation was to table this item, because there's no need for a traffic study, and that's really what the item is before us today.
Well, we have people in the queue, so let's go to Jason Solomon.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna accept the motions without the, I mean, I assume the people queuing in are wanting to make that motion, so I'm gonna ignore, ignore the interrupters and.
Sorry, we, we have the system where you press a button and you get to talk, but you can always make a motion. I'm gonna hold off on the motion, just, just because by tabling this, Dale, if I can ask a question, the Public Works Director?
Yes.
By tabling this, does this mean you move forward with your discussions with them? And, and are they going to, to go forward with, well, your arrangement? I, I feel like not doing anything might, tonight, might, by tabling it, I'm wondering if we are not gonna have an arrangement in place, or I, I'm not sure where we're at on this.
Well, as I explained, the, the item in front of us is traffic signal, or traffic study, yes or no? We've determined that no, not necessarily, it's not needed. Therefore, the request for the exception's not needed. Therefore, this item is kind of a moot.
This is irrelevant, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as whether or not they're gonna build the improvements, that would go along with any development plan. That's a decision that they'll have to make, based on what we've provided, and I don't know what that answer is today.
So, but by asking for a traffic study, you were going to, to make sure that they knew whatever was needed. Let's say, I, and hopefully they will uphold, you know, your agreement with them, but is there anything that you need from council in order to have any teeth behind it, or anything like that? I, I have no idea.
No.
No? Okay.
I think, under the circumstances, and I was contacted by one of the representatives from the company indicating that this was an accepted, you know, an acceptable arrangement, so I think we're safe having a tabling motion tonight. I don't think it will delay anything, so I would entertain that motion. All right, now you gotta ring up. Richie Nordstrom.
There we go. Mayor, I'll move to table this item.
Okay. We have a second from Jason Solomon. No discussion on a tabling motion, so we'll go straight to a vote. All in favor of tabling, item 29, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. On to item 30, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 30, PW092617-13, appeal of denied exception request by Prairie Valley Development Company, LLC, to waive the requirements to construct a 12-inch diameter water main in Anderson Road. The, I'm gonna send this to council without recommendation. It had been denied at the time, but there's no exception.
Let me interject for a second.
Thank you.
I, I made an error here. I was so anxious to get through this very short agenda, now I'm delaying the whole meeting by doing that. We had a speaker request for the public comment. We have, we have a public comment that I inadvertently skipped over, and this is the only speaker request by Stuart Martin and Mandy. And Mandy. So, to be okay with the council, we'll have that public hearing right now. So. So, go ahead, sir, identify yourself and you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Stuart Martin, and I actually was just gonna ask for a request to continue item thirty. To get more time to get a few numbers put in place. We just got out of the Public Works last Thursday. We had a day and today to get things done, and it was Monday, of course. So we didn't get everything done, so if we could continue that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Just item thirty?
Just item thirty.
Okay. Anything else on these items?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I apologize for that. Lisa Modric read in the item, and we'll go to Jason Solomon. I will move to continue this until the next city council meeting, per the applicant's request. I think second from Chad Lewis on that. All in favor of postponing, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one, please.
Thank you. Item thirty-one, PW zero-nine-two-six-one-seven dash one-four. Appeal of denied exception request by Prairie Valley Development Company LLC to waive the requirement to construct curb, gutter, and sidewalks in Reseda and Abelia Streets. The recommendation by committee was to approve.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure Mrs. Modric made a motion. Okay, the recommendation is to approve, no motions on the table. Richie Nordstrom. Lisa Modric.
Glad to be back. I would like to make a motion as recommended by the committee to approve this appeal by requested from Prairie Valley Development Company as recommended by the committee. And if I get a second, I'd like to retain the floor, thank you. And where I'm coming from, from this appeal is recommended, is there was quite a bit of great discussion by the Public Works Committee on this, and there are some documentations as well that they could share with us if we needed to on council, in some map forms. I'm sure they have that with them in order to provide it to us. But in this particular area, it had been determined that by the way the development and the landscape and its prior approval in two thousand nine for this, that it is a drainage area, and it does have a drainage pond, and it's all been set. And, and does, it does run that drainage quite well. And it is not an area for curb, gutter, and sidewalks. So if I could, Mayor, could I have them put up a picture for us, for the public, so that they can see the landscape of what we're looking at here, or?
If someone has a picture.
Okay. I'd like to call Mandy up.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And Mandy, if you could, for those that weren't at the committee meeting, could you put up the picture so that you, you can describe why we would be looking at not requesting curb and gutter in this area?
Yes. Thank you, and I am, Mandy Schmier. I don't seem to have a pointer here. There we go. And thank you. This subdivision was plotted back in two thousand and seven. We were, and it is currently zoned to planned unit development. What we're looking at here is Anderson Road and South Side Drive. Here we have some pictures that we just took within the existing subdivision that was plotted Phase One. We can see here that we have no, no curb, gutter, sidewalks. The, basically, the ditches were designed as a detention, to act as a swell to then, to drain in to the detention cell that's located to the northwest of this site. So what we're, what we're requesting is just to be consistent with what's in the surrounding areas. This neighborhood and the surrounding properties to the north have no curb, gutter, sidewalks. And to create more impervious area would ultimately require us to redesign our detention swell, which is cell, which is currently acting as it was designed to do for both Phase One and Phase Two. Here's some just pictures of the development to the north, Green Valley Estates. This is to the, or west of the current subdivision. And this overall just gives you a general idea of what the area consists of.
Thank you, Mandy. So, as you can see, if you've driven out there, or if you're taking a look at how this development is, it is a rural development, it is outside of the city limits, it is in county territory, and it is the water that we will be running through there. But the construction of curb, gutter, and sidewalks is something that may be out of criteria manual because of the landscape, the developing of this facility as well. And in committee, we found that there's already a Phase One that had been completed. This planned development was also approved in two thousand nine, so it's only eight years old. And now Phase Two is going in. It has half-acre lots, and so it is truly rural with land around it. And it's also being built for first timers and for working for, so the costs are important to keep down so that people can afford to buy land and, and build in this new section. And that's all, all I have for now, I'll yield.
Okay, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
On your slide presentations, it, it shows that we do have more or less open drainage and no sidewalk and curb and gutter in the existing areas. Where does that water go?
It is designed to go to the detention cell that is located to the northwest of this property. And if I can get this to come back up here, I might be able to show you. There we go.
While, while you're looking that up, I, I, I think all the comments that preceded me are very good and worthwhile comments. But biggest concern that I have is that if, if the water is able to transport to that area, to that detention pond, that's fine, but that area is very flat. There isn't very much slope in there. So, is there gonna be any kind of assurance that we won't have water standing there and develop all the way from weeds growing up to mosquitoes and everything in between?
Sure, and I appreciate that comment. And when this property was designed back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the developer at that time proposed phasing this property subdivision into Phase One and Phase Two. So the engineer at that time designed the detention cell to accommodate the runoff and the, the water flow from Phase Two over to this detention cell, which is located right up at the northwest corner of Wenton Street. So the, the detention cell is designed to handle, to accommodate all the storm runoff. And, and that's why we have the ditches, too. They're, they're to act as a detention, you know, for storm runoff as well. When we go to put in new, if we were to have to put in sidewalks, curb, gutter, then we're increasing that impervious area, and that, the ditches then are not serving the purpose that they were designed to serve.
And that's a worthwhile comment. The study that you did back when the original development, can you remind me what the date was on the original study for the PUD?
The original PU, well, the PUD was approved, which the PUD is just the zoning. Was approved by the county. Give me just one second, please.
If I'm not mistaken, it was two thousand and one?
Was it approved in two thousand and six, was the original PUD? And then they had to come through and, you know, plot those, plot the phases, plot the Phase One lots. And we had the overall, back in, back at this, at the time, the overall construction plans were designed, or and approved for both Phase One and Phase Two. But now that we've brought forth and basically Phase Two, and that design criteria has changed through the city, then we've, that's why we're having to meet these new regulations.
Again, a worthwhile decision to make. And that's my major concerns, is that if, if the water is able to transfer from the property to the detention pond, it might not be as serious of an issue. But the other issue, you heard me raise concerns last Wednesday, was the issue of road districts.
Yes.
And I understand each time a development is taking place out in, outside of the, the city, in the county, we have to have road districts in place. But I'm just concerned that not many people understand what a road district is and how it operates, and who, who takes care of it.
And that's, and that is up to the, the overall development of Prairie Fire to make, to make, ensure that they have an adequate and active road district.
Agreed.
Typically, before you could even get a building permit in the county, you have to get their, an approach permit signed off. And either the County Highway Department or the president of the road district signs off on that, on that approach permit, which is ultimately usually the president of the road district.
One other question that keeps reoccurring is the cost of these lots. So, by the time it's developed and all of that, the house is actually constructed, what is the cost per lot then? Or you can have somebody else?
I will defer to Mr. Martin.
Have you got a finished price?
No. Because I asked for a continuance on thirty. We, we don't. We are, we are trying to keep them affordable in the thirty-five and under range for a half-acre lot in the valley. A large, obviously residential lot, but a lot of it depends on what we find here.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your time and, and the information. Thank you.
And we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mandy, for what you're doing. You don't have to be so nervous, just calm down a little bit. You're doing a wonderful job, but I, I do wanna say, I don't have any of the concerns with the drainage that Councilman Nordstrom has. This was designed to drain this way. These ditches are designed this way to filter out those sediments and filter out all of that before it gets to the detention pond, which makes it more eco-friendly. And you're seeing a lot of this in a lot of metro areas now where they're expanding out and they're doing this, 'cause not only does it save money, but it also is way more eco-friendly. So anyway, I think this is a great idea. I think this is a good place to do it, outside of the city limits. And also, like I said during the Public Works meeting, people buy these lots out in the country because they wanna be out in the country. So, they're not expecting to have sidewalks, they're not expecting to have curb and gutter. They're not expecting to have all of these things that are adding cost to this that keep a lot of these people from going out there. So I wanna thank you for bringing this forward, trying to keep it cost-effective, and also doing the right thing, 'cause you're just adding into the already existing subdivision. We'd have two completely separate subdivisions out there within one subdivision if, if we did not deny this. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to chime in and say, I do appreciate trying to keep the lot prices lower and for affordable housing and everything else, but I still have an awfully bad taste in my mouth from Big Sky, so I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to ask Public Works Director a question, please.
Yes.
Dale, I saw staff's recommendation on this, and my question to you is, and I know you can't look in a crystal ball, but to me, what, my question is then ultimately, when these areas get taken in by the city, who ultimately foots the bill for these? As the city continues to expand, who, who ultimately foots the bill for these?
Typically, when properties with a road district are annexed into the city, the road district's dissolved and the public right-of-way becomes the jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City, and all maintenance responsibilities for that right-of-way would be the city's.
So, do we typically assess the current owners at that time?
No, we do not.
We do not? So my other question for you is, in this particular development and other developments that we have taken in, I mean, in the most recent history, have we had to order in, or when we've taken these areas in? Can you give us a bit of the most recent history on that?
One area that comes to mind is the South Valley Drive area. I believe it was annexed in two thousand nine. A lot of rural-type road sections, and they're still the same today as they were when they were brought into the city. A lot of just paved sections with limited ditches, no curb and gutter, no drainage facilities. With the city, we don't have plans to do anything in that area anytime soon due to budgetary constraints for our infrastructure funding, and we have not even come forward or even recommended assessing them for improvements to those roadways.
So my last question is, which was brought up, is some of these other areas are doing these types of development, even in city limits. One, are you familiar with that? And then number two, do you ever, do you see the city moving to such a thing with its planning, its long-term planning as the city continues to grow?
There are other areas of the country that have experimented with rural sections within urbanized areas. It is better for water quality, however, you need more real estate. The situation that we have, at least with this development, is they're trying to squeeze a rural section into an urbanized right-of-way width. And so the ditches are outside of the public right-of-way. So, the adjoining owners can kinda do what they want with, with that property. They can fill in the ditches if they decide that they need additional parking or want a little more elbow room. So it becomes very difficult for a future entity like the city to try to maintain adequate drainage facilities on a road section like that.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the discussion's teetering a little bit, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, if you make it snappy.
I'll make it snappy. Dale, here's my fast question. In this direction, as far out as it is, how many years do we think that the city will catch up with that very rural development?
I have no idea.
That's exactly what I thought. Thanks, Dale. There's, it's unknown. It could be ten years, twenty years, fifty years. So keep that in mind, that this is a very, very rural, outside the city limits area that is going in at this time. And we're working towards infill, and infill is in the direction that the city council's been taking. So, keep that in mind as well, that this is a rural, half-acre development. It's got space around it. And it would definitely be a burden to the property owners as well as to the developer.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just like to point out, as in fairness to the applicant, that one of his yes votes was, is now absent tonight. Do no, no fault of their own, so I don't know. If that's something we wanna consider when we vote this, if we wanna wait, continue it just because of that, I don't know what the council's gonna do, but I hate to see them, you know, lose their position if they're, just because someone else was not here. I don't know if that's something that's appropriate to bring up, but I, I do, I just might point that out.
There's a motion on the table to approve the, approve the appeal. Everyone understand that? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the appeal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Scott? Drew? Sorry. Nordstrom? Modric? Solomon? Lewis? Armstrong?
He was my husband's former client, I believe.
Laurenti? Drury? Roberts? Tyvoe, four-four?
Chair votes no. Onto thirty-two, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-two. PW zero-nine-two-six-one-seven dash one-five. Appeal of denied exception request by Prairie Valley Development Company LLC to waive the requirement to dedicate fifty-two feet of right-of-way in Reseda and Abelia Streets. I'll probably bring Mandy up on this, but the requirement is fifty-two in our criteria manual. However, Dale had stated that in a rural area like this, the criteria manual doesn't fit in the rural area to require fifty-two feet, so that short, both sides may or may not affect this development. And maybe I can bring up Mandy to talk about what that will do for us by keeping it aligned with what the current streets are. Thank you, Mandy.
Yes. The current road width in the existing Phase One development is at forty-nine feet. We are just requesting that the, again, the roads be continued at a forty-nine-foot width right-of-way to be consistent with Phase One.
And with that consistency, may I follow up with a question to Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. And Dale, can we rediscover again what we talked about on the criteria manual and being outside the city limits and how the recommendation is fifty-two feet? However, on this right-of-way, we're already at forty-nine, and how it, how the council can consider this at forty-nine feet versus fifty-two feet?
Would you rephrase your question?
I'm probably supposed to be making this snappy. And I did give you a long one. So from committee discussion, we talked about they're aligning with forty-nine feet. The criteria manual stakes fifty-two feet. Therefore, it's staff that needs to state to us what the requirement is of the criteria manual. But in discussion at committee, you mentioned that in a rural area like this, it really isn't required for the fifty-two feet over the forty-nine. Can you share that? That was the discussion we had on Tuesday?
Right. The point I was trying to make in discussion on Public Works as well as earlier tonight is typically if you have a rural section, you need additional right-of-way width. You don't want it reduced because then you've got public drainage facilities that are on private property, and that can be problematic.
So in this case, when you go out there and you take a look at how the drainage is aligned, and you've got one and a half feet on both sides, which is still in your drainage zone, it's still meeting the requirements and the obligations that were designed in the plats and in the planning back in 2009. It's just aligning Phase Two with Phase One. And so therefore, if I remember right from our conversation, the criteria manual is only a guide in this instance. It's, it's not the rule.
No, our criteria manual is indeed the rule. That is why it was adopted, is to provide minimum standards for development, and the fifty-two feet that is required is a minimum standard.
And are we running under the county side of the standard since this is still county area?
No. The counties, this is in the city three-mile plating jurisdiction, and our criteria is required.
But this council has the right, as they had decided in committee, to allow it to align with the forty-nine feet that's already in Phase One to finish off Phase Two.
That's why this item is in front of you.
Thank you. And that's why I can continue with the appeal and approve it for Prairie Valley Development in order to align Phase Two with Phase One and finish this project and get these houses started. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in the spirit of my discussion earlier, I'd like to make a motion with the blessing of the applicant to continue this item for two weeks with the other item, is just allow them to have the opportunity to have the full council to vote on this issue. That's, I think it's a second for discussion at least.
Sir.
It's a substitute motion to continue for two weeks?
Yes. And like I said before, they've had, they got approval at committee, and some of those committee members aren't here right now, and as we've seen, that does make a difference. And I just think it's, in fairness to the applicant, they should be allowed to do that. They're here, and it's not their fault that the people aren't here. And I would also urge my clients, my council members to think about affordable housing. Once again, this is the third time this has been up here, and we keep shooting down affordable housing options every time we get a chance, and we all campaigned on affordable housing. So I just want you to understand that every time a house goes up a thousand dollars in cost, you knock two-hundred thousand people out of the market, and that, that's a fact. I can back that up. So I'm letting you know that every little, every dollar does count. Thank you.
Becky Drury.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Joe Landine a question, please?
Yes, please do.
On that last question, Mr. Landine, is that appropriate to make a continuance like that because council members are here or not here?
Well, I mean, you can continue it, the current item. I don't, I don't think this motion can continue the, the previous item. I'm not sure if that was the motion or just this one. I think you can continue it, whether you feel it's appropriate to continue it based on council member's presence. I, I can understand why you would do that. I mean, there are times where there have been fewer council members, and I think there have been items potentially continued, but it's up to you, I guess, the nine of you to decide whether you think that's appropriate or not, and could factor that in on your vote on the continuance.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I yield.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to continue this item presumably for two weeks, the first city, or the October sixteenth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Armstrong. Laurenti.
No.
Drury.
No.
Roberts.
Aye.
Scott.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Modric. Solomon.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion fails five to four.
Okay, just a quick check-in with city attorney. Ms. Armstrong abstained on the last item, but voted on this one because it doesn't conclude the, it doesn't draw a conclusion on the item, it just moves it. Does that appear to be appropriate?
Well, I think if you, if you abstain, you should probably abstain on all the items, but.
You, are you clear? Okay.
I mean, that would, again, make it a tie vote, so. I, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the elected official to decide whether or not they have a conflict. I can provide guidance, like, on an opinion, but yes, I would agree if, if you're abstaining from an item or for a conflict, you shouldn't vote on anything related to that.
No, I, I think she decided that she didn't have a conflict on this item, and I'm willing to support that. So, thank you. So what's the vote then? Motion fails five to four, so we're back to the original motion, which is to approve the item. To approve the appeal. Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'll be voting no on this primarily because, yes, we will save upfront costs at the beginning, but on the back end, we're going to be seeing a lot of expense come forward. So all the maintenance and everything that's not included in this cost will be sent back to the property owner. So there is some maintenance that there, people are going to have to incur, all the way from road maintenance to, and especially when we reduce the size of this right-of-way, there's going to be an additional expense that goes to the property owner. So that's my major concern, is that, yes, we've saved money upfront, but on the back end, it's going to be more expensive. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stuart Martin, I was going to ask you a question, so it's a good thing you stood up right there. Good. After the denial of the last one, and it looks like this one may be going forward to be denied too, and if the water line was denied, so let's just say straight across the board, everything that was asked for by the city happened in the subdivision, is there enough profit to be made in this to actually do it?
No.
And?
There's not.
That's exactly what I thought. And, you know, this is going to be unfortunate if this happens because we just saw this happen recently over on Creek Drive. Somebody wanted to bring forward some apartments, and the city asked for, you know, some work on Creek Drive, and unfortunately, it didn't fall within their, you know, P and L, so they couldn't make the, they couldn't make it work with that added expense, and I see that happening here, and I see that happen too often, and we're always talking about affordable housing on this board, but we don't do anything for affordable housing. We try to force everything, and, and in my opinion, this one, this is so isolated that we would have had an opportunity to do something with affordable housing that really wouldn't have affected the city that much. But anyway, I just wanted to ask you that because I had a pretty good idea that this wasn't going to go forward if.
Yeah.
So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I once again have a question for Mr. Martin as well, if I may.
Okay.
Mr. Martin, so what were the, what were the lot costs you were looking at if this all went through?
We're trying to keep them at thirty-five or under.
Okay, and right now, that's pushing about what number?
Well, with the increase, just, again, the rough numbers that we've ran, we're at, curb and gutter is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. We're looking at another three hundred thousand dollars in order to get close.
So three hundred thousand?
So another ten thousand dollars or more, actually, a lot, or a little under.
So it's approximately another, okay, I'm sorry, my calculator's not working so great up here because user error, but anyway. My point being here is, once again, Mr. Roberts just said, and I said earlier, it's about seven thousand dollars and a lot more, which is a huge amount of money. It sounds like, oh, seven thousand dollars is not a big deal, but folks, you go, people get, don't qualify for houses all the time because of five, six thousand dollars. It happens constantly, and Mr. Martin is one of the more successful people to meet in this, this community as far as realtors go, and it's because he's not an idiot. He knows what he's doing. He's not doing this for fun and practice. I guarantee you, he's doing it because he knows how much, there's a need for a certain price point right now in Rapid City, and we don't, are not hitting it, and we can't because lot costs are just too much. This is one of those areas that doesn't require as much dirt work, as much, you know, geological movement and stuff, excuse me, geological movement, anyway, you know what I meant? Moving dirt and things like that. And it's rare to find that in Rapid City, but then we throw a bunch of requirements out that jacks up the prices again. So you want affordable housing, guys? This is the third time we've had it, and we've shot them down. I just, I don't get it. And it's always in the name of, oh, whatever regulation or whatever. Well, you've got to learn to, there's got to be some leeway in those things, otherwise we're never going to hit the affordable housing without some sort of government help. I mean, it won't be done. No one can do it. So I just really, really wish you guys would think about that when you vote.
And I'm not sure that, you know, thirty-two is not going to make a difference. If thirty-one was denied, it makes no difference because of the setbacks we're going to, I mean, curb and gutter's going to go in that extra right-of-way anyway. So.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the denial. I'm sorry. Approve the appeal. All in favor of that motion? Let's go straight to a roll call.
Nordstrom.
Vote if you want.
Modric.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Drury.
No.
Roberts.
Aye.
Scott.
No.
Tie vote four to four.
Chair will vote aye. I do want to say, though, it's, it's, it's a false narrative to claim that the reason that lot costs are too high is because there are development rules.
Oh, please. Can I have a chance to report?
No. There, there is a land, there is a landowner who sells land, and there are construction costs that go into that land, and to think that none of that has to do anything with the cost is naive.
I'm not really sure that you could have the microphone.
So, we're on to item, public hearing items thirty-three through thirty-five. Well, there's no public hearing items, so we'll go straight to item thirty-three under alcohol licenses. Justin Christman, thirty-three dash seven Worldwide LLC, doing business as The Man Salon for a retail, on-off sale malt beverage license. Motion approved by Scott, second by Solomon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item thirty-four. Second reading ordinance six-one-nine-one and ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Dakota Hills Trailer Sales for rezoning from Park Forest to low-density residential for property generally described as being located at sixty-sixty-one Covenant Drive. Recommendation is for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, motion passes with one no from John Roberts. Item thirty-six, we'll go to the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that, which is attached at five million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion approved by Laurenti, second by Drury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, motion passes with one no from John Roberts. Item thirty-six, we'll go to the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that, which is attached at five million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion approved by Laurenti, second by Drury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.